Good morning, everyone. Hello. I'm Dan Garodnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. I would like to welcome all of you to today's public hearing and wish everybody a meaningful Veterans Day and a thank you to all who served. Veterans Day is Friday. We are joined today by a number of commissioners in the room. We have Commissioner Bozorg, Commissioner Osorio, Commissioner Cirullo, Commissioner Gold, Commissioner Goodrich, Commissioner Marine, and Commissioner Dweck. We also have, it was just right on time, I love that. We also have Commissioners Knuckles, Kirmani, and Rampershad on Zoom. So we will, this is our first one since we've been back in person of that type, where we've got a few commissioners out for a variety of health-related issues and family-related issues, so we will find a way to make that all work. We do not have a long agenda today. We're going to begin the meeting with votes, as is our custom, including on the relocation of the FDNY EMS station to 29th Street and Hudson Yards, West Chelsea, and certifications on Meisner Avenue and Rathburn Avenue in Staten Island. Public hearings today will be on a couple of subjects. First is a proposal by the Administration for Children's Services to move their headquarters within the financial district to a building that they believe will better accommodate staff and provide more efficient services to the families that this new location will continue to serve every day. We are very pleased that we are joined by ACS Commissioner Jess Danhauser and some of his colleagues on this important project, so welcome to all of you and also to DCAST. Also up for a hearing today is a proposal at 446 to 448 Park Avenue in Bed-Stuy and map change related to the previously approved Bruckner site rezoning. So that's our agenda for today. So we should be able to move with some speed here. And with that, I am going to turn the stage to our calendar officer, the Secretary. Madam Secretary, we may have some instructions and intros, so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Engage portal and in person in the CPC hearing room, 120 Broadway, Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, November 9, 2022. I will now call the roll. Chair Garodnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles is absent. Commissioner Benjamin is absent. Commissioner Bozorg?
Here.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Here.
Commissioner Crowell? Commissioner Dweck?
Here.
Commissioner Gold?
Here.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Here.
Commissioner Kirmani is remote?
Here.
Commissioner Marine?
Here.
Commissioner Osorio?
Here.
Commissioner Rampershad is remote?
Here.
Acquorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, October 26, 2022.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. On the minutes. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, October 26. Is there a second?
Second.
So seconded by Commissioner Marine. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Minutes are approved. Thank you. For those remote, too, we can hear you.
Scheduling, calendar numbers 1 through 4. We have resolutions for adoption scheduled on Wednesday, November 30, for a public hearing to be held in person in the CPC hearing room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage portal.
Great. On the resolutions, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Gold. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Great. Thank you all. Resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 6. Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 5, Block 675 EMS, number 7 relocation. CD4C 220468 PCM, as a matter of an application for a site selection and acquisition concerning Block 675 EMS, number 7 relocation. For a favorable report on calendar number 5, Chair Garodnik.
How about aye?
Commissioner Bozorg?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich? Commissioner Kirmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad?
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number 5. Borough of Staten Island, calendar numbers 6 and 7. Calendar number 6, CD2N 230058ZCR, 197 Meisner Avenue. Calendar number 7, CD3N 230028RCR, 765 Rathburn Avenue. And the matter of an applications for grant, certifications concerning 197 Meisner Avenue and 765 Rathburn Avenue for the adoption on calendar numbers 6 and 7, Chair Garodnik.
Aye.
Commissioner Bozorg?
Yes.
Commissioner Cirullo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck?
Yes.
Commissioner Gold?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirmani?
Yes.
Commissioner Marine?
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershad?
Yes.
Calendar numbers 6 and 7 have been adopted. The next part of the hearing, the next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 8.
Great. Okay, let's get right into it. What is the first item today? I will note that if members of the public come to testify, their remarks will be limited to three minutes. But Madam Secretary, why don't you call the first item?
Borough of Manhattan, calendar number 8, ACS HQ 110 William Street, CD1N 230084PXM, as a matter of an application for a notice of intent to acquire office space concerning ACS HQ 110 William Street.
Excellent. With that, I'm going to call the applicant team for 10 minutes, which includes Jess Danhauser, Lisa Heinz Johnson, George Donahue, Peter Brereton, Michael Piccirillo, and Stephanie Gendel. So welcome, Commissioner. Good to have you here. Thank you for everything you do. And whenever you're ready, you can go right ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Wonderful to be here with you. My name is Jess Danhauser. I'm the Commissioner for the Administration for Children's Services, and I'm joined by Lisa Heinz Johnson, who's our Deputy Commissioner for Administrative Services, and George Donahue from DCAST, who'll also be available to answer questions about the business transaction. We're here to testify today in support of our application to acquire office space at 110 William Street in Manhattan to become the new ACS headquarters. Let me start by sharing some information about ACS' core mission and our work. ACS protects and promotes the safety and well-being of New York City's children and families by providing child welfare, juvenile justice, primary prevention, and childcare assistance. ACS is responsible for this wide swath of programs. Our Division of Child and Family Well-Being, in particular, provides community supports to families and children, including childcare vouchers, child safety and injury prevention efforts, and they oversee a network of family enrichment centers across the city. ACS is charged with protecting and promoting the safety of New York City's children through the child welfare system, which includes prevention, protection, and foster care services. ACS' Division of Child Protection responds to allegations of abuse and neglect and refers families to services and supports that keep children safe. ACS contracts with nonprofit community-based organizations that provide child abuse prevention services and foster care services. Finally, ACS administers the juvenile justice system, which includes intensive community-based programs to support youth and their families, as well as detention and residential programs for youth placed by the courts. Let me try to quantify this for you for a moment. When a person suspects a child has been abused and neglected, he or she can call the New York Statewide Central Register, often referred to as the SCR. If the state accepts that report and it is a New York City child, ACS is required to respond and assess the safety of that child very quickly, within 24 to 48 hours. In a typical year, our Division of Child Protection responds to approximately 58,000 reports of suspected child abuse and neglect. As a part of this work, ACS' child protective staff assesss child safety and make referrals to a variety of programs and services aimed at keeping children safe and supporting families. Approximately 35,000 children from over 15,000 families receive prevention services each year. There are currently fewer than 7,000 children in foster care, an all-time low. Over half of children coming into foster care are now placed with kin, meaning they'll be with family members with far reduced trauma. In juvenile justice, we serve approximately 3,500 children who participate in our community-based prevention programs. Approximately 1,150 youth are ordered by the court to be detained in one of our secure or non-secure detention facilities, and approximately 126 youth are placed in close to home by the family court. ACS strives to provide upstream support to families and communities whenever possible so that children and families can thrive. We oversee a network of 11 community partnerships and 12, soon to grow to 30, family enrichment centers. Approximately 52,000 children from low income and other vulnerable families receive childcare vouchers through ACS. ACS has approximately 7,000 staff throughout the city. 150 William Street has served as the headquarters for the past 26 years. While the building has been retrofitted over time, that building no longer serves our current and growing needs. Any retrofit or renovation would require staff to be displaced and work at separate locations for extended periods of time, which would be very disruptive to our operations. Moving the headquarters to 110 William Street, which is down the street in the building ACS is already located in, will benefit for the children and families of New York as well as ACS staff. I'm now going to turn to the presentation to Lisa Heinz Johnson to provide more details about the benefits of our moving to 110 William.
Lisa.
Thank you. Good morning. As the Commissioner mentioned, the new location will provide benefits both for our staff and the children and families we serve. We will be able to intentionally remodel this site to include space for staff to meet with clients. We will also be able to provide developmentally appropriate spaces for parent-child visiting, and staff will have more modern and technologically advanced workspaces. Prior to selecting this site, we explored and visited other sites. Together with DCAST, we selected 110 William due to its proximity to our current headquarters and public transportation and because it offered reasonable rental costs and optimal space configuration. Providing comfortable and safe space that supports our work with families is critical. Five of our 18 divisions serve clients at our headquarters. This includes holding parent-child visits, holding family conference meetings, meetings about child safety, providing customer service to families seeking childcare assistance, providing onsite support to youth in foster care seeking housing, and providing constituents with an office to handle their inquiries and concerns about individual cases. This new space will provide a separate ground floor entry and elevator for clients along with metal detectors, all of which will enhance safety and security. We will also be able to build out the space to better meet the needs of the families we serve. There will be a welcoming waiting area for children and families, a pantry to supply our clients with emergency food, a space where ACS can provide clients with clothing to meet immediate needs, conference rooms for family team meetings, a lactation room, and separate restrooms with changing tables. I'm now going to show you a few slides of what the space can look like. These photos come from our recent acquisition at 12 Metro Tech in Brooklyn, which you approved a few years ago. As you will see, we have been able to make the space more client-friendly and better able to meet the needs of children and families. This slide provides a sample of what the client reception areas can look like. This slide provides a sample of what the family meeting rooms can look like. And this slide includes pictures of our boutique and space for children, also from 12 Metro Tech. We are excited to create similar spaces at 110 William Street. 110 William Street will also provide our staff with a modern and technologically equipped space for their work. We will be able to provide staff with adequate workstations that are both union-sized and include DCAST standards for furniture and seating. Staff office space will be separated from the client spaces to ensure confidentiality. Superhubs will be integrated with their staff, and there will be adequate conference room space for staff meetings and trainings. There will also be a modern security office located centrally within the space. And this slide provides samples of staff workstations and conference rooms. And I'll turn it back over to the Commissioner.
Lisa. Thank you, Lisa. I want to talk a little bit with you about, you know, why this is so important for us. The, excuse me, real quick. Thank you, Stephanie. 110 William Street offers continuity for so many of our staff while being able to meet the growing needs of really serving families in a different way. In this administration, we are looking to be upstream, meet families where they are, meet their basic needs, to keep them as strong as they possibly can be and not de-burn to services. They're close to the courthouses. I also want to say, as the leader of ACS, it's important that my team is close to actual services so to be able to meet families' needs, to be able to be near our child protective staff, near our family court legal services staff, to really understand what our staff go in, go through day in, day out, throughout the city. Of course, we are out there with them throughout the city as well. But those two things, the continuity, we've had staff who are coming downtown for years, obviously close to City Hall, close to so many important government operations. So we really think this is an excellent opportunity for us. So thank you. Happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you and your team for everything that you do for the city. We know you have an incredibly difficult job and an incredibly important one, so we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
From a matter of land use, you're moving a couple bucks away. Your service is already in the neighborhood, so that is not, you know, much of an issue, you know, in contrast to sometimes where we have conversations about city services. I think there is one question that we have for DCAST, and it relates to this building in particular, because we're all very familiar with it, because we've all been in it with one city agency or another. And, you know, I think this was a question that came up for me when discussing it with staff, and certainly it also came up on Monday, which is, did the city ever explore actually buying this building for the purpose of use by ACS or any other agency? And, you know, and where did that conversation land? And how does DCAST think about it? So it's really more of a question for DCAST if...
Thanks, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and your guidance. In regard to purchasing, we agree with you. I personally agree with that, and our department agrees with that kind of strategy. But to find a building for sale that matches the square footage, the timing, and geography is very difficult. So the best opportunity for us was this lease hold at 110 William Street.
Did the city inquire as to whether or not the owner of the building would be interested or willing in engaging in a conversation about a sale?
Yes. Our department is leasing and acquisitions, so we always ask that. Sometimes landlords are a little hesitant because our process is very long. So if they're thinking about selling, they'd rather do it in the private sector because it's a shorter duration.
And where did that conversation land?
We would do the lease hold. That's what they wanted.
So the owner was not interested in engaging in a conversation at this time in a sale with the city, to the city? Commissioner Dweck is going to jump in here.
Thank you. So just to follow up on my question at the review session, I understand you'll be leasing the property, but the overwhelming majority of the building will now be leased to the city of New York. That being said, would it be possible to negotiate or insert a right of first refusal in the lease hold should they eventually decide to trade the property?
Right. Every, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Every lease that I do, we always ask for either the right of first offer, which I prefer, or the right of first refusal. And what happened is the landlord will discuss our length, you know, because if we're interested in buying something, usually the landlord wants it done quickly, you know. They're thinking, let me put this on the market. They have a short duration. But for us, it takes a long time. So sometimes we're able to get that clause in, but usually the landlord pushes back on the duration that'll take us.
When you say duration, I'm trying, please clarify. You mean the duration to close on a purchase if you would execute your right of first refusal or...
Right. So when a private sector enterprise wants to sell a building, they have an idea of when they want to sell it, you know, within a certain amount of months. And they want to know within a certain amount of months, maybe 30 days or 60 days, that we will buy something. But our process is very long, you know, with appraisal, O and B, et cetera. So that's where their pushback is.
So I guess it's a matter of negotiation. I'd imagine that being that we are now, the city will now be the majority tenant of the building, at one point, if this building should come up for sale, pretty much someone's buying an annuity on the revenue from the city of New York, and therefore I think that we would be in a better negotiating position to negotiate now upfront the right of first refusal. Because I personally worked out of that building at one point for, you know, at EDC back in the day, and I've seen at FBS and other agencies, I think like Commissioner Garodnik said, we've all been in the, in that building. So perhaps if there's an opportunity to negotiate some kind of, like I said, right of acquisition upfront, now that we're about to enter into a lease and it's dependent upon the commission's vote, we do have some leeway to negotiate with them and perhaps, you know. We're not setting a price now. We're setting the right to entertain a price in the future. But at least we would have the first opportunity to buy something that's been in the critical land use portfolio of the city of New York for as long as I can remember.
I respect your guidance, and so what I'll do is I'll reengage them with that particular clause.
Thank you. Perhaps you can let them know that the conversations you've had with the commission about that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to go to Commissioner Rampershad on Zoom, and I will note that we've been joined by Commissioner Crowell, too.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a quick question. Can you speak to the timeline of the build-out and when you expect to be fully online, operational?
Right now, we're in negotiations, trying to figure out that duration. But construction will take about 18 months, and we'll be moving in most likely in the year 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine and Commissioner Gold.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Donahue, for clarifying, because I also had concerns about that city leasing and spending dollars versus acquisition of purchase. You also mentioned that it's very difficult due to the timing aspect of the purchase. So are there any buildings in Manhattan that you guys are studying that may fit your footprint, that may be going for sale, that would avail themselves of an opportunity for the city of New York?
I'm in the leasing part. That would be in acquisitions. They would have that data.
If we can get that data somehow, Chair Garodnik, that would...
Thank you. Will you, will you take that request back?
Yes, sir.
Just two more questions, only because I didn't find it anywhere on the documents, and maybe I'm missing it. What is the duration of the lease and what are the options beyond that?
It'll be 20 years, and then we will have, I believe, two, five-year renewal options.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gold?
Thank you. And thanks. And Richard and Danhauser, the work of ACS is truly very, very important to New York, and, you know, thank you, and thanks to the agency for all that you do. Certainly very close to my heart. But to this, just two quick questions. One is, it looked like, I guess, this was in the plan, and I guess the documentation that we looked at had it ready perhaps later in 2023. So can you speak about when the current lease ends and what the provision would be for holdover to 2025? Just following up on Commissioner Marine's question.
That lease expires in August of 2023, and we have the obligation to hold over, which we're in negotiations now.
Got it. Okay. And then second, which I didn't see in there, but it might be helpful given the scope of the lease. Can you give a sense for the current price per square foot on the current location versus the location that we're looking at?
The current location is a little different because we have operating expenses and tax escalations that are different than when you take a new space, right? But I can tell you, because we're in negotiations, I'd like to say that the rent is within the market. It's a good low rent in the market.
Got it. But just, I mean, maybe without getting into the hard numbers on negotiation, relative to where you are, is it up 10%? Is it down 10%? Is it, this is, you know, I mean, we're taking a large footprint here, and we're, we'll be an anchor tenant, if you will, so just, you know, to get a sense.
I would say the base rent is slightly more.
Okay, slightly more. Got it. Thank you.
Commissioners Cirullo?
Thank you. So I'm going to bounce between, I guess, DCAST's question and ACS, although it may, maybe you know the answer to this. So just the first one, and I'll, since DCAST was up here, here's a question. What is the, do you know what the potential future use of the space the agency is moving from will have? Is there an agreement? Is that going to remain empty? Is there outstanding time on the existing lease? Or is this sort of transferring at the perfect time where that's not an issue for the city in terms of maintaining any, you know, sort of lease hold obligations financially to the space? What's happening?
We have a good rapport with the existing landlord, and we're trying to coordinate our timelines together in regard to the extension. That gentleman has not expressed what he's going to do after we leave.
Okay. Okay. But the city doesn't have any plans necessarily to move another agency into this space that you know of?
No.
Okay. The other question is really, since I assume, in addition to sort of recreating the operations for the agency in this new space, part of the, I guess, what leads you here is the reality that you've outgrown the space that you're in. So in terms of the new square footage and all that you have been doing and need to continue to do, and perhaps things you're thinking about doing in the new space, whether it's services or just administrative, how much leeway do you have in the new space to accommodate growth in this space since there's a 20-year lease, potentially 30-year existence here? How do you see that in terms of the timing of what the agency needs to deliver the interaction with the public and the clients? And how do you see growth being accommodated in the square footage that you're leasing now?
I can give a legal aspect. We do have the right of first offer for any leasing space that becomes available.
In the build, so that's part of it? If something opened in the building and you needed more space? Okay.
That's correct.
But in the, in terms of the application before us, the existing 640,000 square feet or whatever, is that, do you move exactly from the old space into the 640,000? Or is there room even currently to grow to some degree?
This will accommodate our needs. It won't, it won't allow for a lot of growth. It's right, where we see growth and we want to continue to push is in community. So our, you know, in community-based services or across the city. But this will accommodate the headquarters and what needs to be gathered together down here.
So I guess my question is, if, are there things in what this space will accommodate that you're not doing but you will be able to do?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to marry the idea that you've outgrown the space, but you're really only taking over the same amount of space you actually need.
So it's really about the capacity to renovate and to be able to bring it up to date to accommodate the kind of customer service, the kind of staff experience that is right for those we serve and right for our staff. Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And one final question from me, and then I don't know if there are others before we close. One of the concerns that was raised at the community board level was questions about parking, placards, et cetera, in the neighborhood. Wanted to see if you could address any thoughts or efforts made to try to address that particular concern.
Sure. We have a fairly limited footprint of parking, and we are absolutely constantly looking at ways to make sure we can reduce that footprint at any opportunity. Some of the needs around that really are related to having, you know, moving young people, to making sure that we can get food to where it needs to go to get goods and services. But we're not looking to expand that footprint in any way, and we're always looking to see if we can make it more efficient.
Thank you. All right. I don't see other questions, and I also don't see members of the public testifying. On this one, I'm sorry. I don't have you signed up. Oh, oh, as part of the applicant team? You're not part of the applicant team? Okay. So we do have members of the public. They're not part of the applicant team, so we're going to excuse you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Garodnik.
And I am going to call. So it's Peter. And and what's your name? Great. Okay. Peter, we're going to start with you. Peter Barriton, to be followed by Michael Piccirillo. And and then we'll we'll see if anybody else is here, if we can change their official designation in the in the log. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Peter Barriton. I'm from the New York City District Council Carpenters. I represent approximately nineteen thousand hardworking men and women of the Carpenters Union and its affiliated trades. We build it faster, safer, with less workers, and can ensure no wage fraud from predatory contractors takes place with taxpayer dollars when unions are involved because all workers are covered by a collective bargaining agreement. I have two questions. Both are probably answered better by a representative from DCAST. Is this job covered by prevailing wage, meaning every single construction worker on the job will be paid the area wage standard set by the Controller's Office of New York City? Also, will it have certified payroll to verify the workers being paid correctly, and no misclassification is taking place? Second question is, how much is DCAST agreeing to pay per square foot for the extremely large lease?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have question. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So my quick question, I understand the union concerns, and thank you for raising that. So is your concern more about how the project will be as opposed to denying the project?
No, we fully support the project.
Okay, all right. But just want to make sure that it's union labor. Okay.
Great. Thank you. And I think your your questions are good ones, and so we, you know, we will ask this of ACS and DCAST that they provide us and or you the answer to those of those questions, just so that that we all have them, and we appreciate your raising. Let me see if there are other questions for you before you go, though. Okay. Thank you very much. And Michael Piccirillo, are you, do you? Yes. And Stephanie Gandell here, too? You're part of the team. Yes. Okay, got it. All right. Thank you. I think I've got it straight. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michael Piccirillo, also from the Carpenters Union. There's no doubt modernized headquarters for the Administration for Child Services is a must for a city like New York. But, you know, obviously, we want to make sure that the taxpayer dollars during the construction is being spent properly. The building owner actually has a general contractor that they use. Just curious to know if that's who they're going to use for the buildout. And just, you know, we need verification that there's no wage fraud committed by them or any subs that they are going to use on the job. You know, wage fraud is very rampant when it comes to construction in New York City. And, you know, it's taxpayer dollars, so we want to make sure that that's being spent properly. You know, obviously, this is a necessity, this project, right? It's it's ACS. They're basically doing God's work every day, you know, so that's that's all I have to say about that.
Excellent. Thank you. And I I've got the the summary of the questions are prevailing wage, certified payroll, per square foot cost, certify the the contractor on site, and questions about wage fraud as the things that I have in my notes. So we will we'll ask ACS to follow up with us on that. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. So I guess the question is, this will be a follow-up for ACS, is the building owner doing the buildout and tenant improvements? Or is this going to be a job for the city of New York?
If you if you're willing to come back up and answer it, let's do it. We'll ring DCAST up. We'll see if we can answer these questions right here. Great.
First and foremost, we are big proponents that every landlord we deal with complies to all laws. So we have every law cited in our lease for them to adhere to that. In this particular case, the landlord wants to do the work. This is their building, so they are doing the construction, the design, they're paying for it. And as I mentioned previously, the rent is in the lower end of the market. It's a good rent.
Just comment on that. I don't know if it's in the past. I think it's not been prudent or a policy that we comment on the specific rent amount that would put us at a disadvantage in any future negotiations for our other sites. So that's just one of the reasons why we might not have heard the rent, the actual rent amount.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And we we do have some some follow-ups for you, and we will just ask you to respond to those. And to the extent you're willing to respond directly to those who just testified at the carpenters, that also would certainly be welcome. Okay, terrific. I do not see any other members of the public wishing to testify on this item, so you can correct me if you are here, and I am wrong about that. Seeing none, we will close the hearing on 110 William Street. I thank you all for your testimony, and we are, in a moment, going to open the hearing on the the next item on our agenda. But before we do, I want to call, I'm going to ask the calendar officer to call Commissioner Crowell for his votes today.
Going to call the item again. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number six and seven. Calendar number six, CD two and two three zero zero five eight ZCR one ninety seven Meisner, and calendar number seven, CD three and two three zero zero two eight RCR seven sixty five Rathbun Avenue. In the matter of applications for the grant of certification certifications concerning one ninety seven Meisner Avenue and seven sixty five Rathbun Avenue for adoption on calendar number six and seven, Commissioner Crowell.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. We could hear you with a yes. All right. Thank you for that. And now I'm going to ask the calendar officer to call the second hearing of the day.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar numbers nine and ten, four forty six, four forty eight Park Avenue rezoning, CD three, calendar number nine, CD two one zero three three two ZMK. Calendar number ten, N two one zero three 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 ZRK. Public hearing in the matter of application for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning four forty six, four forty eight Park Avenue rezoning.
Excellent. Thank you very much. For this, we have an applicant team which is joining us remotely, and I'm going to call them Richard Lobel, Kevin Williams, Joel Horowitz, Louis Garfinkel, and Amanda Iannotti. Welcome to you all. As soon as you are ready and we can see and hear you, go ahead. Let's see if we can pull them up.
Good morning, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel P.C. for the applicant.
Good morning, Mr. Lobel. We can hear you loud and clear. If you're ready, go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I would ask that the presentation be loaded. Thank you. So good morning, Commissioners. We're here for the four forty six to four forty eight Park Avenue rezoning. I'm joined by the applicant team. We'll be happy to answer questions after this brief presentation. Next slide. The actions here are two. The first would be a zoning map amendment to rezone all or portions of nine lots within block eighteen ninety eight and eighteen ninety nine in Brooklyn. The rezoning would be from an M one one zoning district to an M one four R six A zoning district. This would facilitate the development of a an eleven-story, sorry, an eleven-unit, six-story residential building at the site. The second action, of course, would be a zoning text amendment for.
This is not good.
Lot options one and two. Next slide. Great. So law thirty eight on the site was previously improved with a legal nonconforming three-story residential building that was demolished in two thousand and fourteen due to impaired structural integrity, and lots, both lots are currently vacant. Next slide. The proposed building at the site would be six stories plus seller, would have a floor area ratio of three point four nine, and would rise to a height of eighty feet with a setback at the fifth story. There would be eleven units. The breakdown, five one bedrooms, five two bedrooms, and one three bedroom with three affordable units at the site. Next slide. The next slide is the zoning map. I think that in the remainder of my time, if we could go two slides ahead to the, or actually, three slides ahead to the area map. This provides a good illustration of the proposal and why this is good for the surrounding community. You see the area map before you. We are immediately adjacent to an M one four R six A district, which was mapped in or around two thousand and one. And so this would merely be an extension of that R six A within, I'm sorry, an M one four designation. Previously, the MX four had an M one two designation. Of the nine lots within the development area and the rezoning area, all nine lots have residential use. So this is a one of those rare instances where the proposed rezoning will result in a hundred percent conformance within the immediate area as well as close to ninety percent compliance, given that the buildings are all built to FARs up to two point three, with the exception of the building immediately adjacent to us, which was pursuant to a BSA variance. We note that the community board voted in favor of this application, as did the Brooklyn Borough President with conditions. And with that, and we would be happy to answer any specific questions. I know there were questions posed at the executive session. The entire applicant team is available to to answer questions regarding any aspect of the application.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see what questions we've got for the applicants here. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I I thought it was really clear. I appreciate also the some of the clarifications that you make today. I wanted to follow up on some of the recommendations from the Borough President's office. First and foremost, there's a recommendation to increase the minimum of rental housing units to ten apartments. I was, I'm wondering if you can explain what's your response to that?
Yeah, so. So I believe that the exact recommendation provide MIH units within the proposed proposed development with a minimum of ten apartments reflected in applicants' filed plans. So the applicant here is committed to providing affordability. You know, we understand that, as with many other projects, the lot in question does not deuce, requires square footage to result in mandatory inclusionary housing, although we will be mapped within a mandatory inclusionary housing district. So the but the applicant is committed to providing affordability here in the form of three units. So, you know, we're, you know, the applicant has been has been only has owned this property and has basically been applying to the city for rezonings and for prior actions for many years. We're just happy that this is now moving forward and will be an R six A district. And so, you know, we're, the applicant is part of their feasibility planning for the building, and in accordance with our discussion with the community board, is happy to provide those.
Thank you. I do have time for a couple more questions. Thank you. I I also wanted to ask about the recommendation to incorporate resiliency and sustainability measures. I was wondering if you can explain whether you're considering them. What is the scope and extent of your response?
Sure. So in brief, we've discussed this as an applicant team. The sustainability measures, as are required and supported by tax abatement per local laws ninety two and ninety three, will be provided at the site. Right now, these include green roof and sustainable roofing area, layer of vegetation covering fifty percent of the rooftop, drought-resistant live plants, space to cover at least eighty percent of this planted layer. We intend to provide solar and photovoltaic panels at the site, which again is supported by the solar panel tax abatement plan. In addition, the applicant intends to incorporate low-flush toilets at the site, LED lighting, typical measures which add to the sustainability of this building, and are investigating the use of New York State Renewable Energy Standards with regards to energy sourcing from renewable sources and an all-electric building. You know, I would add here that this building is a relatively modest proposal. The lot itself is eight thousand square feet. The building itself is eleven thousand square feet. But understanding the goals of particularly the Brooklyn Borough President has set out, the applicant here again is thrilled to be able to move forward on this and is intending to provide the sustainability measures as discussed.
Thank you. One one final question, which is building on, again, a previous conversation that, well, one of the recommendations that the Borough President made, but also a conversation that we had during the review session in terms of an upcoming area-wide study to understand land use and zoning patterns and and specifically land use changes in this area, which is still in some parts of it being used for industrial manufacturing, yet there's a series of nonconforming uses that rezonings like this one, despite the fact that you highlight that are small, may actually increase potential speculation in the area and could potentially affect or have a wider impact in in reducing the amount of industrial jobs, which, you know, is a concern. And so I'm wondering if you can share with us a little bit, what do you foresee? Are the levels of nonconforming uses in the area, but also to what extent do you think that the the impact of the project? What is the impact on the project in 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 sort of accelerating this process? That would be really important insight for us as we begin to think about what the questions would be for that area-wide study.
Sure. Listen, Commissioners. So in many rezonings in which we are involved, there are questions with regards to area-wide studies. And obviously, the city has finite resources in order to devote to these area-wide studies. And so many times, we have private applicants who come in and indeed supplement and would probably even help the process along by by not only conducting the environmental review, which is necessary and often costly to allow for rezonings to proceed, but also demonstrating that this type of zoning works for this area. So take this area of Bed-Stuy as an example. Within the last twenty-some-odd years, regardless of the rezoning activity as supported by the City Planning Commission, there were approximately sixty, six zero, residential variances that were granted by BSA in this area. And I think what that reflected was the lack of viability of particularly M one one districts and the opportunity to really develop on these sites and to add to the housing stock in the area. So so I don't think in this particular instance, with the nine nonconforming buildings of the nine buildings being rezoned, that we're going to cause any disruption with regards to an area plan and and that we're going to have an impact on manufacturing space, given the fact that none of these sites really are are so used. What I would say is that is that in a larger sense, you know, we support, as applicants, we support an area-wide rezoning here. I think that the city, through the Community Board and Brooklyn Borough President, in appropriate cases, will say, okay, this defined area is appropriate for private rezonings. But I don't see any, I don't see any, like, any lack of continuity by allowing applications like this to proceed, given the fact that in many of these cases, what we do merely supports the rationale for a larger area-wide rezoning. As with other areas of Brooklyn, the environmental review that we've done has really been in place of additional environmental review, which will eventually need to be done. So to allow these blocks to move forward and to allow housing starts to continue during the time, often often long lead-up times to an area-wide rezoning, you know, what we see right now is that there's massive demands in this area for housing now. These sites oftentimes are immediately ready for development. This is an area where in the last ten years, census tracts demonstrate that that the population growth has far exceeded the development of housing, which of course has resulted in rises of over a minimum of thirty percent in in the cost of rent. So I hope that kind of answers the question, but, you know, we, as private applicants, do look forward to contributing to that process and feel that what we're doing right now is consistent with the city's goals.
Thank you so much for for your response. I appreciate that. I think that, and I and I, in some sense, very much agree with you in that regardless of the size of the project, we need SICRA to try to understand or anticipate the impact of some of these proposals. So I appreciate that comment. I guess my final question is, on the other side of this, what do you, can you share a little bit, what are the, what are you contributing to maximize the public purpose of the project, given the fact that regardless of the size, we are actually legalizing nonconforming uses? And and I think that this is meaningful, sort of moving forward in terms of what what are the expectations for like, going forward? I mean, this is all, again, in the context of the study, but I would like to specifically understand what you see your project is contributing to that conversation in terms of maximizing the public benefit.
Yeah, so public benefit often comes into play when we're discussing rezonings. And as the commission is aware, when we go before community boards, there's a wide range of outcomes from unanimous disapproval to to support of our applications. You know, I would note at the outset that, and I'm I'm looking at my notes for the for the vote on this, the community board voted in favor of this applicant application twenty-three to nine. Personally, I've brought rezoning applications in this community board for over fifteen years, and there's been a transition in the community board where, when we initially came in, the discussion of public benefit was such that we had applications similar to this that were unanimously, that you unanimously rejected. So as a kind of a bellwether to where the area sits on this type of rezoning and public benefit, sometimes the public benefit itself is the opportunity to allow the zoning map to reflect what's actually on the ground. Here you have nine properties, potentially nine owners, who anytime they want to make any change to their building, to add one square foot to those buildings, they are not permitted to do so, given the fact that those are nonconforming uses. So in the, we've got applications, notably in community board aid in Brooklyn, where there were much larger sites, and we had an opportunity to bring massive public benefits in the form of community space, in the form of varied levels of affordability and other benefits, in some cases backyard gardens, which are able to be used by the community, public space, et cetera. This does not lend itself to that application, to that type of application, given the fact that these sites typically range from. that these sites typically range from two thousand or less square feet to twenty five hundred square feet. But um I still think that there's a public benefit to allowing applications, individual owners to now expand to give them additional space and to the extent that they do redevelop to require them to do affordability eh eh in the uh to the effect that the uh sites are aggregated and become larger. So uh sometimes the public benefit is not as apparent as as something which is, you know, a large space or something devoted to the community. But here, I think that the the overwhelmingly positive vote of the Community Board here recognizes that sometimes um you know, just the the rezoning itself is enough of a benefit, given the surrounding con- context and land use.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you, uh Mr. LaBelle. Uh let me see here. I see no further questions for you and the applicant team, so I'm good. We're gonna excuse you. Uh I am also noting that I do not see any members of the public wishing to testify on this, although the extent that anybody was mischaracterized as part of the applicant team or has not raised their hand at this stage of the game, I'd like to give one final chance here. Okay, seeing none, um we will close the hearing on four forty six, four forty eight Park Avenue. Uh thank you very much uh for your time and uh your explanation uh testimony this morning. Uh let's uh let's move on. Madam Secretary, what is the next item on our list today?
For of the Bronx, calendar number eleven, Breckner Site Res zoning City Map Change, C D uh ten, C two one zero three zero one M M X. Public hearing in the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning Breckner Site Res zoning City Map Change.
Great. Thank you very much. Um we have a applicant team uh for ten minutes. Uh uh Jaclyn Skarinci from Ackerman. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Ghoradnik and Commissioners. Um my name is Jaclyn Skarinci from Ackerman L L P on behalf of the applicant Throggs Neck Associates L L C for the Breckner Boulevard Sites Demapping. Um uh next slide, please. This is an application for the amendment to the city map for the elimination and discontinuance of a very small portion of Meyer Street that is privately owned, uh currently tax lot thirty five, fronting on Edison Avenue in Bronx Community District ten. This action will facilitate the redevelopment of the site with a new five story mixed use building and residential building. As the commission will remember, this demapping is a related action to um the rezoning for the Breckner Boulevard Sites rezoning. And this demapping uh will will only affect what was called Site B within that rezoning area. Um the the rezoning was approved by the commission on August twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, and the City Council recently approved on October twelfth, twenty twenty two. Next slide, please. This is uh the view of the portion of Meyer Streets from Edison Avenue that is applicant owned and is mapped but unbuilt. Next slide, please. This uh is is shown to illustrate the specific area of Meyer Street. I know some of the commissioners asked um questions about why the Community Board voted unanimously to disapprove the demapping application. Um and it was stated yesterday that uh and the Community Board was um overly um opposed to the rezoning and any change in the the zoning district here. And I think a lot of the sentiments that were expressed during at the Community Board hearing were related to that as well. And also um not understanding that this is not demapping the entire uh Meyer Street, which is currently shown in yellow is the city owned area that will remain city owned and mapped. Um and this is only a small portion on um Edison Avenue uh that is part of tax lot thirty five today. Next slide, please. Um and this this is just to illustrate the development site um that will facilitate Site B. Uh the demapping will occur on tax lot thirty five, um and the development site will anchor Breckner Boulevard and East Tremont. It's proposed as a five story mixed use building with approximately a hundred two dwelling units, of which thirty one will be M I H units. There will be ground floor retail and a community facility space, which approximately fifteen thousand square feet has been committed by the applicant team to working with the Kips Bay Boys and Girls Club for a new community center at the site. Thank you for your time um and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Um well, for those who did not have the benefit of tuning in to our review session, as difficult as it is to believe that somebody would not tune into it, let me just ask as a follow up uh to that, um you know, we we just approved this and the council approved this project a couple of weeks ago. Um just for the benefit of somebody who might be watching or paying attention, why are we talking about uh a demapping action separate and apart from all of the rest of the stuff that we have already done?
Sure. Um so it it really is more uh an issue of process. Um so we had file, the applicant team had filed the demapping application um almost a year ahead of officially filing the rezoning application because there is a process where um outside agencies are given an opportunity to comment on the application. Um it's part of this polling process. And so um the final sign off on the demapping is made by the um Bronx Borough President's office. And so that that application was not complete when the rezoning application was also complete. So the the rezoning application traveled um a little bit ahead of this application, but the applicant's intent was to have everything travel together.
Okay, understood. Commissioner Goodrich.
Hi, um I have a quick question. Um oh, hi. Um so this is what I just a quick question, just so that you can respond to what the Community Board says. I'm just gonna read it. Um as you know, we remain opposed to the Breckner Sites rezoning with your commission recently approved in a transcribed interview with the real deal. Um in April twenty twenty two, you said that the Department of City Planning under your leadership will not plan to lead with rezonings. Unfortunately, we are left to contend with, in the form of the Breckner Sites rezoning, an application that is out of context and inappropriate for a transit desert and perhaps could have been an example of the department's commitment to not lead with rezonings and speak to the communities first. Can you respond to that? It's a letter to the commission, but you know, it would be helped. Can you this is what the you know, the community says on paper. Can you respond to that?
Sure. Um I think, you know, as part of the 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 entire uh U L R process, there was a lot of engagement with the community um and the applicant. The project significantly changed um from how it was certified in terms of um commitments that were made uh in terms of affordability. Um one of the sites was was actually changed to be a hundred percent affordable. Um there were real commitments made um and in working with H P D in the city to provide veterans' housing across uh the four sites. There'll be twenty five units of veterans' housing. And that came out of the public review process and the requests for by the community uh for additional housing for veterans um and real commitments by the applicant team related to that. And um another commitment that actually will come out of this site that we're um requesting the demapping application for is that the Kips Bay Boys and Girls Club um there's a commitment to locate fifteen thousand square feet for a new community center. Um you know, just responding, that's just responding to how the project changed as a result of um community feedback. But I think, you know, to be honest, it it was hard to interact with a lot of um the community members who just didn't want any change in in zoning district. Um and I think that that did come out of a lot of the public meetings and unfortunately, um you know, that that was some a lot of the response that did come out of um the early community engagement.
So is there can from your perspective, is there contention with the transit desert that the foot traffic that that there is not enough public transit in that area and the additional housing would bring more people and it would make it unsustainable?
So or no, uh in response to the the transit desert, um we actually had provided additional transit analysis, um because there were some questions about the transit studies that were done in twenty twenty. Um and there are more, you know, this is located on two wide streets, Breckner Boulevard and East Tremont. Um they're wide streets that can accommodate additional density um and also multiple bus lines that run along these eh wide avenues um that can accommodate um additional riders and and residents within the area. Um with that being said, there was a strong recognition by the applicant team that a number of residents within the community do drive. Um so there was additional parking that's provided at each of the sites um above what is required by zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you know, I I will note um since some of the comments that were read into the record by Commissioner Goodrich were comments that I I made uh to the real deal, I will just say uh that um you know, we continue to be in a housing crisis in this city. This is a community district which has delivered uh fifty eight affordable units over the period of twenty fourteen to twenty twenty one. Uh and um this is a modest project which has senior units, veterans' units and market units, affordable units. It has uh the right composition in a way that not only did it earn the support of the City Planning Commission, but also the City Council. Um so um I know that that was uh not the perspective of the local community board. Uh and we certainly understand that and uh recognize that, but also this is a an important project, an important moment. Um and uh so I did want to just make that point here. And obviously, we are discussing the the related mapping change, not the the substance of the uh of the details of the housing uh uh opportunity here, but uh I think it's also worth noting. Commissioner Marine, Commissioner Osorio, go ahead.
Thank you. Um I know this is not a question for this portion of the application, but I know that when the um applicant decided to fifty percent affordable housing, we were never really uh apprised of uh where that affordable housing actually would exist. Is it in the veterans? Is it in the seniors? Is it in the overall development? How did how did that pan out? And how does that play into the units and the sizes of those units? If if we can be provided that information on the side, I guess that would be really appreciated. I know it has nothing to do with this application. I realize that.
Sure. I I know I was considering whether to include a slide because I appreciated your question yesterday. Um but I think um just to give an overview, and I can, we can provide this in writing as well to the commission. Um the breakdown um by building, uh Site A has a hundred twenty five units, thirty seven M I H units. Uh Site B has a hundred two dwelling units, thirty one M I H units. Um Site C is a hundred percent affordable, so that's that's gets us to the fifty percent. It's ninety nine senior affordable units. And Site D is twenty five units. Um and the the veterans' housing is it's twenty five units, but that is um not part of the M I H units. So they're gonna be provided as Vash voucher units. Um the applicant's been working with H P D on this and Veterans Affairs and that those will be um once the units come online to work with with the city on locating veterans within the units, but they will not come out of the the M I H and the senior units that I just uh specified.
The the veterans' building is is twenty five units and all twenty five are Bash vouchers.
Sorry, it's twenty two units at Site D. The twenty five veterans' housing units will be across Sites A, B, and D. There uh we don't have a breakdown of which uh but they'll be distributed proportionally across those three sites that are not senior housing.
Yeah. Understood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Osorio. Thank you so much, Chair Ghoradnik, and thank you so much for both the presentation, but also the eh candid response to the questions. Um I I think that um and and I also um acknowledge and 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 respect sort of the eh observation about this being part of a larger proposal that is already moving forward and that it's making an important contribution to affordable housing. I think that this is this is a really important take. However, I just wanted to highlight that it's not just the outcome, what we're sort of discussing here, but also the planning process. And I think that in in your response and the way in which you eh responded to Commissioner Goodrich's questions about the the Community Board's voice, I was wondering if you can explain or and and you know, what has been sort of the relationship with them? Have you come back to them to explain? Uh on one end, uh some of the clarifications, observations you made here, uh because they're still sort of like eh eh maintaining a very clear position against it. And and you know, it would be important, I think, to continue to work on that, particularly because of your investment in creating a comprehensive set of improvements. Number two, I wanted to highlight that it's not just the Community Board. I mean, I think the Borough President has raised a series of concerns uh along those lines. And I was just wondering if you can eh one, I mean, for the record, I think it would be useful to maybe synthesize and summarize some of the changes that you've discussed that are happening in terms of the larger project. Again, understanding that this is a small component of a larger processing process that needs to move forward. But just to understand what have been some of the concessions that you've made since since this last was um reviewed and voted on. Um and and specifically to the scope of this new um eh eh the conversation or component of the conversation, um I I was wondering if you can respond to some of the in transportation infrastructure sort of improvements concerns that the Borough President is raising and and how, you know, the map, the demapping sort of contributes to that or relates to that larger uh transportation infrastructure question. I I risk raised some questions about the eh the need to build unrequired parking, but I think that, you know, you've you've addressed it. I think that's clear. Um my my overall concern is is what is the plan to build the required transportation infrastructure? How does the demapping of the street relate to that now that we've decided that we're gonna increase density to achieve affordable housing?
Okay, I'll start. I think you had three different points. Um the the first one um related to the community outreach, I think we hear you uh very strongly on that. And um you know, the applicant was not required to go back to the Community Board during the U L R process, um but we did uh with the councilwoman to give an update to leadership on um the changes that occurred throughout U L R. Um because it did come from a variety of differently. There were some recommendations by the Borough President to add additional two and three bedroom units. Um and and also um at the council member's request, some additional uh commitments related to um union labor and veterans' how the veterans' housing um as well as the hundred percent senior affordable housing building. Um all all of that came out of the public review process. So we were able to brief the the Community Board leadership um in early October on those changes. Um but I I think your um point on continuing the conversation as the the buildings come online and uh and get ready for construction um is well heard and I think um really important to the development team moving forward, given that these will be um M I H sites and there will be an affordable housing lottery and filling. Um you know, making sure that the Community Board is aware of these opportunities. Um and also just continuing the engagement, like there will be the Kips Bay Boys and Girls Club, um which will be an amenity for the entire community as well. Um I think the applicant team is, you know, committed to continuing to keep the Community Board um in the loop on on the projects as they board, um, in the loop on, on the projects as they eventually, eh, move to construction and beyond. Um, this was just approved, so I think, you know, we're still in the early stages of, of planning process and don't have a timeline for construction for these sites, but, um, I think that they are very eager to, to begin, to begin that process and, um, to continue to update, uh, all of the stakeholders that have been engaged throughout this process. Uh, that's on the first point. Um, on the second point, just, it did hit on, um, I think the, the main changes to the project, uh, but if, I think we can give, um, an overall summary of how the project was certified, uh, versus, um, ultimately what was, what the project was at the council vote, um, so that you can see how, how it really did, um, evolve throughout the, the public review process. Um, unless you would like me to go into all of that now?
No, no, in writing would be great, thank you.
Okay, um, and then also, um, the, the last point on the infrastructure and transportation, um, I think is, is really well-heard and, and that's been part of the conversations that we've been having with the council member, um, and the administration, that, you know, right now, the, the, the studies that were done as part of our environmental review indicated that these projects will not trigger any significant impact on, on current transportation infrastructure, but that, you know, eh, to continue to pay attention to these sites and that there are needs for upgrades, um, by the city for, for bus shelters and, and other types of infrastructure related to transportation for these sites. Uh, there is a recognition that, that that is needed and we will continue to engage with the administration on, on those items.
Thank you, I appreciate the response to the three questions. Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Budzark.
Um, I just wanna add that I think, and I, I know everyone who's worked in this space knows this, but we, um, historically there have often been, um, you know, coded ways of, um, rejecting inclusion by stating things like, we can't fit in our infrastructure or, um, it's gonna be too much of a stress on our schools. There's a lot of cases where those are very valid concerns, and I think it's on the department's obligation and all of a sudden the commission to really look at when these are valid and when it's coded for other types of exclusion. Um, and I think in this case, it's been one of those where we really have to dig into as planners and as members of the commission of like, you know, this is an area that's seen so little affordable housing in decades, the type of community that's been generally very successful at fighting against any kind of affordable housing and new change. And so I think it's been a very tricky one, I think the application, applicant has done a pretty good job of navigating that, um, but it's, um, just worth mentioning, uh, given the focus of some of this conversation, that sometimes, um, these types of concerns, we have to look really deep at whether they're code for other types of exclusion.
Good, thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Goodrich.
Also say, for me, larger project that came before, I watched the community board hearings, only got a sense of the tenor and voted for the project, but I also think that, um, when we have projects like this coming before, and the developer and whoever else is, is and the community is saying one thing and it is, be, um, you know, uh, contradicted by data, I think that's an opportunity for you to literally respond with data and not say, oh, whatever, they said, you know, whatever, I don't, eh, eh, they said whatever, the community board, we're just gonna move forward, because that's part of, that, that's also part of the attack, right? And so I do think that's why I wanted to give you an opportunity to substanti, to, to, you know, this is what the community is saying on paper, these are literally their quotes, what is your actual response with data, um, about why you feel differently? And I think that that's a very important part of the process as well.
Yep, that's, I think that's a, I think that's an excellent point. Um, okay, um, with that, uh, thank you very much, um, Ms. Scarinchi, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Scarinchi, uh, and, um, we are going to excuse you, um, and we're going to move on to the public portion of, uh, this hearing. Um, and we have one member of the public, Michael Cass, uh, who is here to testify, and as soon as you are ready, um, you can go right ahead. We don't see you yet, but I think we will once you start.
Hi, my name is Michael Cass. Hi, my name is Michael Cass, I'm a resident of Council District Thirteen, and I'm here in support of the Brechner Sites rezoning city map change. Now, given that the bulk of the Brechner Sites rezoning itself has successfully completed EULAR, this de-mapping of a portion of Meyer Street is probably a foregone conclusion. This portion of Meyer Street is private property and was, what is currently there isn't suitable as a public street. It would never make sense for the city of New York to acquire and build out that portion of Meyer Street. I believe the community board continues to be mistaken and de-mapping is the only appropriate option. So with that in mind, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank City Planning for its role in passing the Brechner Sites rezoning. I found it meaningful that the rezoning passed the City Planning Commission unanimously. With the affordable housing and amenities it proposed, it deserved it, and it should have never been controversial. I believe this rezoning will serve as an example for years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for that, thank you for those, uh, those words. Um, we appreciate your being here. Let me see if there are any questions or comments. Okay, Mr. Cass, thank you very much, thank you for, uh, for, for being here. Okay, I do not see other members of the public, although I'm just gonna give another second to see if anybody, uh, would like to raise their hand here in the final moments. Um, but I do not see any, so I'm gonna, eh, ask you, Madam Secretary, uh, we're gonna close the hearing on, uh, the, uh, the Brechner map, uh, and I'm going to ask you, Madam Secretary, if there's any other business before the commission today.
Uh, no, Chair Grotnick, there is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the Upcoming Meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal through GCP's website, or by mailing your comments to Calendar, Information Office, City Planning Commission, one-twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one-zero-two-seven-one.
Wonderful, uh, wishing all the best to those commissioners who are under the weather, uh, and, uh, thank you to all who are present here in the room today, and of course to the, uh, members of the public who testified today, as well as the applicants and applicant teams, um, thank you, and to the staff of the Department of City Planning, as always, thank you for everything you do to make this happen. With that, this hearing is adjourned.
The time is eleven-twenty AM.